Welcome to a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at 9:30 at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Eliria. These are public meetings and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.loraincounty.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners page, then click on View Agenda.
Good morning, can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah, you know last week when the Administrator wasn't here, everything was working.
Yeah.
Except you guys.
Oh, okay.
Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the December 6th meeting of the Lorraine County Board of Commissioners. Our word for the day is 2nd John 1 verses 5 and 6. "I am writing to remind you, dear friends, that we should love one another. This is not a new commandment, but one we have had from the beginning. Love means doing what God has commanded us, and He has commanded us to love one another, just as you heard from the beginning."
I have to love Kayla?
Yes, you have to love everyone.
No, you don't. You love everybody.
And then our dog warden has our little skinny dog from the kennel today.
Good morning. Today we have a three-year-old female, two- to three-year-old female in kennel number 10. She's available for adoption right now. She'll be spayed, and she has all her shots but a rabies shot that has to be done by a licensed vet. So come down and see us, we have 31 dogs. Thank you.
She's so curious. She looks so curious. I'm Adam Clark.
Do we want to go right into the presentations?
Sure.
Okay. Is Lauren Burgess here?
Hi, Lauren. I wasn't sure if that was you or not. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good to put a face with the name and the voice, so either side, whichever side you like.
Sure.
Well, I wanted to thank the Commissioners for inviting me to come and speak today. This is my first time really doing something like this, and it's exciting, exciting. I also wanted to take an opportunity to thank the county Commissioners for the support you already provide to us. You know, we get the in-kind donation of office space utilities and telephones, and without your support, we cannot possibly provide the services that we provide to almost 9,000 Lorraine County senior residents. So without that help, we could not function, so I want to thank you very, very much for that support. A little bit about myself, I've been with the agency seven years. I am acting as the interim Executive Director. I have a master's degree in social work from Cleveland State University. I started as an intern, so I started at the bottom and worked my way up. I'm a licensed social worker. I worked in our Aging and Disability Resource Center for about five years before being promoted to a supervisory position, and now here in October, here I am. So I'm very excited to be here today. It's been a very humbling experience, and I'm honored to lead the agency and continue to do the good work we do. A little bit about the services we provide, I kind of like to cluster our services into five. We have our support services, that's transportation to medical appointments. We are funded for about 300 rides per year, which comes out to about 1.2 rides per day if you take a look at what days were open. In November alone, we had to turn away 27 people for rides, so that was really hard for us to do. We have housekeeping. We provide housekeeping services twice a month for about two hours to our clients. They are determined by an assessment to determine their need as far as their activities of daily living, as well as their instrumental activities of daily living. We can consistently serve about 86 people a year. Right now, our waiting list is 119, and we get about three new referrals per week for that program. So, and we have our chore services. That program does not have a waiting list, that's a first-come, first-served. Obviously, we have heavier times, you know, in the spring and summer and fall. That is providing heavier chore work like washing walls, windows, gutters, things of that nature to help keep their home safe. The next section is our nutrition programs. We do a congregate meal program. That's with the restaurant voucher with Blue Sky Restaurant in Amherst, Eliria. They've been our partner for, I think, nine years. We can provide up to 6,552 vouchers to clients per year, and then they go and they get a nutritious meal. The menu had to be reviewed by a dietitian, so only specific menu items are allowed to be used with the vouchers. We have 74 people waiting for that program. We do home-delivered meals. Our areas are Avon, Avon Lake Sheffield, and Sheffield Lake, as well as the southern part of the county. Because of the generous local donations from the mayors of Avon, Avon Lake Sheffield, and Sheffield Lake, we do not currently have a waiting list. We have funding to serve 100 people per day. We're at 98 right now. And then in the southern part of the county, we serve 15, and that right now is being funded by our Agency General Fund until we can find a new funding source for that. We have a food delivery program. We serve about 190 people per month, delivering them either a box or a bag of food. We have 43 people waiting on that list. The next area is social work services. It's primarily our Aging and Disability Resource Center, which is where I came from. We do information assistance, where it's primarily providing information over the phone, providing referrals to community resources. We do benefits assistance, where that's Medicare, Medicaid, Social Security, HEEP, food stamps, anything you can think of that would be like a public benefit, they assist clients with accessing those. And then we have our options counseling program, where we assist clients, their families, caregivers with developing a long-term service plan to put in place to keep them safe in their home and independent for as long as possible. We have a kinship program. That program works very closely with Lorraine County Children's Services, as well as the probate court, and we do get funding from them as well, which we're very appreciative of. That program works with grandparents and other relatives raising grandchildren or other relative children. It has been drastically, the problem has been exacerbated by, of course, the opiate crisis. We have seen a pretty large uptick in requests. We provide legal assistance when possible, paying for legal fees for guardian and custody. We have a separate food pantry for kinship families, and then we also have support groups that we hold every month for the caregivers. Then our last area is our volunteer program. We have 248 volunteers located in 80 sites throughout Lorraine County. It's for those 55 and older. We are, Lorraine County Office on Aging is the sponsor for the Retired Senior Volunteer Program. We've been doing it for over 40 years. It's a really great program. These people get an opportunity to give back to their skills and knowledge to the community, and it's also an economic boost as well. So, moving on to our staffing, we have three offices, one located here in Eliria. We have one in Wellington and one in the northeast area, it's in Sheffield Lake. We have five full-time staff, and we have 32 part-time staff. Our part-timers average about 24 hours a week. Our staffing is stretched thin, we're razor-thin as far as our personnel goes, you know, we do the best we can to get the services out that we can with what we have. A lot of our staff are underpaid. Our on-the-ground, direct people, like our housekeepers, our chore, and our drivers, they make minimum wage or slightly above. Our social work licensed staff, they're pretty well below the agency standard, or the Ohio standard as far as industry pay. We have, I have some county statistics for you today. According to the US Census in 2010, our population consists of 20.4% older adults. They are projecting that by 2020, it's going to be 27%, and then by 2030, it'll be 32.5%, which by the way, I'd like to point out, will be higher than Cuyahoga. So, we are definitely aging, and I've also noticed a trend of older people moving into our county, probably to get away from gentrification and things like that. In 2010, there were 6,142 residents over the age of 60 in Lorraine County. In 2015, that increased by 10% to 68,142, and I got these stats from the Scripps Gerontology Institute at Miami University of Ohio. They do a lot of stats for us. So our agency, we're stable, but we are facing some financially difficult times ahead. The Older American Act funding, which is a federal program, is close to 50% of our funding, and it primarily funds these direct service programs that I just talked about. We, in 2017, we received a 10%, or a 2.5% cut, which came to about $10,000. We were able to offset that mostly by cutting one specific program, and I don't mean by any stretch that any of our programs are expendable, but if you looked at it, this one was the most expendable. And again, by no stretch is it really expendable. We are, I was just notified a couple weeks ago that to expect another 2.5% cut at least, if not 6%, it could be anywhere in that range, which could be another $10,000 up to devastatingly another $24,000, which would absolutely devastate our services. Our personnel is already stretched thin. I'm going to have to apply at least the 2.5%. I can't apply it to personnel, there's just no way. So, I mean, it's going to have to, it's going to have to go to services, which absolutely breaks my heart, because I know how much these people need this help. And even if I did cut personnel, it's going to affect direct services, because if I don't have the personnel to do it, then we're not going to get the service out to the community. So we are looking at, in two years, a cut of about, close to $21,000 into our direct services money. It could be up to $34,000. So while we appreciate very much what the county Commissioners do for us, if there would be any way that any of this could be offset slightly by anything that we could get from the county, we would so greatly appreciate it. I understand very fully, you know, the situation all local governments are in. It seems to me that the federal government's passing on to the states, states are passing on to the local government, and that's, you know, we have to try to take care of our own. We appreciate very much what the Commissioners already provide to us, but if there is anything, anything at all that could be done, we're looking at a deficit of about $20,368 is the number, if we take another 2.5% cut.
So have you reached out to any of the federal leaders, you know, in Washington? They want to take care of the wealthy these days, who are struggling to pay their bills?
Yes, I had a meeting with Beth Thames, with Senator Brown's office. We discussed it with them. I had a meeting with Senator Neath, or not Senator, Representative Nathan Manning on Monday to talk about increasing the Senior Community Services Block Grant at the state level, because that would increase transportation and nutrition, which is two areas we have waiting lists for. And actually, since early 2000s, that allocation's been cut almost in half, as far as from the state level. So, it's been difficult.
And on top of our CDBG being cut, and we can only allocate, what, 10% of the CDBG money for Meals on Wheels, so that has also been cut.
We haven't, we haven't, multitasking, excuse me. We haven't provided funding for Meals on Wheels to the seniors at this.
No, no, I'm just saying, in general.
Right, we usually go through the Neighborhood, well, it's not Neighborhood Alliance anymore, it's using old terms. I used to be on the board there when it was Neighborhood Alliance years ago.
You're Neighborhood House, I think it's Neighborhood Alliance.
It is Neighborhood Alliance now, it used to be Neighborhood House, right.
Neighborhood House then. But you still provide Meals on Wheels, though, out of the center over here still, right? Do you have a small program still?
Not, we've never provided meals out of Eliria. It's been out of our northeast office for those four years.
But you still do a small program.
We are still doing those, yes, and that is federally funded, yes.
I thought there was, you know, different programs still running, but you're right. We're only allowed to allocate a certain portion of the CDBG, so as our allocation has shrunk, and we've added more, we've added more cities that used to be direct cities, not entitlement cities, direct cities, such as Amherst and North Ridgeville, we've had to spread the dollars more, and the dollars in the total community have decreased, so we've had to decrease support of services to seniors via the CDBG block grant funding allocation.
Sometimes that's the only one-on-one contact these elderly get, is it's also a well-check.
It's also a well-check.
So it's very important that we meet as many of those elderly as we can.
And our volunteers out there, they're pretty consistent, so they develop a relationship with these people, too, so.
Jeff, you get Title 20 funds, right?
Yes, we get a lot of money from Title 20. I always feel like the federal government might be kind of getting down because.
He's got to come up.
Jeff, you're talking now, you got to come up.
You know, you always show up about once every three years, and I ping on you, don't you? Don't I? Sorry. But I, but you.
We get a lot of Title 20 money, but for three or four years, the federal government has been saying they're going to cut us, because it seems like it's redundant in their eyes to drug, alcohol abuse, things like that.
Now, can the Title 20 funds that come to Department of Job and Family Services be used to support some of the senior services at our?
Yes, we had done Meals on Wheels years ago with Neighborhood House, I believe.
So, is it a possibility of using Title Funds to support senior services, or does it have to be a particular program at the senior services?
We can file what's called a CASP with the state, and then we can do that. We used to have a friendly visitor, we used to have Homemaker, Home Health Aid.
Right.
Those funds have been cut over the years, and we have what we have now. Just a decision, I think maybe the Neighborhood House picked up some of our services years ago.
Right.
Can you and Bob have a conversation and maybe talk about how we may be able to enhance and leverage some of that money to maybe support some services over there?
That'd be great, yes.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Appreciate that very much, very much.
You won't be back for three years, will you? Thanks, Jeff.
Actually, I may be a client of the Meals on Wheels or something.
You never know, right?
Yeah, I can't stress enough, Lauren, that you have to talk to the people who control the votes.
I know.
If you don't have the votes, it's hard to get things done. So, you know, it's always nice to talk to Marcy Capter, you know, but you've got to talk to people who control the votes, you've got to talk to the Jim Jordans of the world.
Absolutely.
Good luck on that conversation. And you also have to talk with Bob Gibbs, you know, they're the ones who control the votes right now.
Right.
And in Columbus, you know, Republicans clearly overwhelmingly control the votes. And, you know, we get all the campaign literature, election time, talking about how we got to take care of people, and we're fighting to take care of our seniors, and then they don't put the dollars with it. And the food insecurity is something that I constantly hear about.
Yes.
I mean, it is a serious concern in this county.
It is.
Seniors very concerned about where their next meal's coming from.
Yes, yes, it's sad, yes. We do what we can, but no, I'm part of the advocacy motion, which I know Commissioner Lundey, you've participated in, and I've tried my best to become even more involved, writing letters, making phone calls, trying to become as involved with that as I can, because you're right, that's, the squeaky wheel gets the oil, right? If we don't make our voices heard, you know, we have to speak for people that maybe can't speak for themselves, and that's what I'm here, that's why we're here.
And the sad part is, the campaign contributors get the greater response.
I know.
So.
I can write them a check for 50 bucks by the second to me.
There you go.
Any other questions for me?
No, thank you.
Thank you very much for having me. Thank you.
Well, we used to, before the budget crunch came and we had all the layoffs, and we used to give about $70,000 towards Office on Aging.
Well, we actually didn't give anything. We offset a salary of the director, which was something that had been done earlier. We changed that prior to 2010, it might have been about 2008. It was kind of an odd relationship, because the Office on Aging is run by a nonprofit, which placed us in a challenging situation with the director that was actually a public employee assigned to a nonprofit. It was a bit of a wiki wiki with governance, and so it was very awkward. And when we exited that relationship, when there was changes made with the leadership of the organization, but let me talk to Job and Family Services and see where we can potentially collaborate and see if we can't find some relief there, and I'll get back with the board on that.
Okay, cool. Thank you. Thanks again, Lauren. You want to bring up?
Is it Lorraine County Judge Kennedy?
Jen.
Wow, that's quite a burger. It makes me hungry.
That's for Kayla, who I think ate 10 burgers. She said she ate seven of them.
Well, good morning.
I told her she should have brought cupcakes and cheeseburgers this morning.
I said, I've eaten enough over the last few weeks. I can't have any more cupcakes and cheeseburgers.
Not for you, us.
I feel like every time I come, I'm always talking about food. Thank you. October was the month of food for us. We ran the cupcake crawl and the burger battle, and I actually have to just kind of give you a little side note, is we had a lot of office dialogue, a lot of banter about how these two campaigns would work together, was it the right timing, was it the perfect storm, were we going to be competing against each other with the two food campaigns? And I'm proud to share that it really worked nicely together. As we know, what we wanted to do with Restaurant Week was really just kind of continue that momentum of spotlighting the restaurants in Lorraine County, and the burger battle was a casual counterpart to the Restaurant Week success that we had. We are, one of the kind of punny lines that we came up with was 12 restaurants, one crown. So as you know, there was 12 participating restaurants that were all offering a $9 burger, October 20th through the 29th. The participants, as I think you all know, are listed there. I'm not going to go through them and read them, but what we really tried to do was look at locally owned and operated restaurants in all different parts of the county. How we spread the word, we really relied on three different mediums, grassroots. So we know that these restaurants had some really loyal followers. We knew that they had their own audience through their Facebook and maybe their e-blast. So we looked to the restaurants and said, how can you promote this within your viewership, within your audience? So they used their social media, they went out and put the posters up, they put it in their menu, they'd put it on their e-blasts. Additionally, we armed them with some materials, the window clings, digital treatments for their menus, entry cards, social media posts, we gave them the scripts, we wrote the posts for them, we gave them photos to use. So we armed them with the material to do that. Additionally, we used earned media, and just for the record, earned media is more of the media that we actually go out and get, that we do not pay for. So it's the true PR side. And as you can see, I just kind of listed all of those. We were able to break into the Cleveland market, which we got a really nice piece from WKYC Channel 3, which is about 2.5 minutes long, so that we actually were able to track all the referrals from that online through our website. Additionally, we were on Q104 Morning Show. We were able to piggyback from the cupcake crawl and the burger battle, and we were able to get that show for free, which we could see the referrals as well. And of course, our local partners here, The Morning Journal, The Chronicle, WEOL, WOBL, and WDOW, gave us a lot of promotion as well. Paid media. We bought Facebook advertisements. Now, we looked at adults 35 to 54. We went all the way from Cleveland, downtown Cleveland, through Sandusky, and we actually, this time, we looked at men and women. A lot of time, we look at women, and we target women specifically, because women make 85% of the household decisions. And this time, we actually, because it was a burger battle.
It's only 85%?
I know, and my household number's a little different. But that is the true, the number on record. So we did actually target men, and it was interesting to watch our referrals and to see the burger battle participants as well, targeting men and how that worked out in our statistics. Digital display advertising, and I just listed a few of the websites that we showed up on. Now, just, you know, for the record, when you look at display, it's those banners that come across the top when you visit a website. It doesn't have to do with, you know, any sort of behavior in terms of what website you're on, it could be due to your past behavior. So we were on the Golf Channel, the Weather Channel, Cleveland.com, the Food Network, Yahoo, and then Recipe Patch. So a little bit all over the place, we've got a ton more, but those were just some of the top websites that I thought I would list for you. Also, we got some paid or value-added on the Cleveland Now Show, which airs on WIO19. We actually, which is different from our behavior patterns in the past, where we went with Channel 3 or Channel 5. WIO19 is a different audience, and it tended to really work for us in terms of analytics. Just, you know, making the change, that jump really worked for us, and also allowed us to maximize our value-add, the free things that they give us with our money.
Cleveland Now, that's their morning show?
That is their, I will call it a sponsorship show.
Noon show?
It runs in the morning, but a lot of times, it is what they do for advertisers.
Oh, okay.
So they ran it twice for us, and then we purchased local radio as well.
I actually did see it on TV.
You did see it, okay.
Couple times.
And they also run it on their website, so. And this is just an example of the Facebook ad, an example of the display ads. And I don't have it on the screen here, so you're going to have to forgive my old eyes, but this just kind of runs through our click-through, and what sizes worked well, and what times worked well. But in essence, just to kind of give you an overview, our ads seemed to work really well as we approached the burger battle, the farther away it was, the slower it was in terms of click-throughs. Our click-through, our bench rate, the click-through rate is the times that people actually click on the ad and go to the landing page in which you send them. It was two times over the benchmark for food-related ads. So some of that actually was, our art was really good, our photography was really good, which of course made people click on it, and it was a new idea to the area. So people were interested in it. And here's actually the display advertising, so this is how our display did overall. So our click-through rate was a little bit lower on the display ads, but it helped reinforce those Facebook ads that we were showing on the digital side. This is actually blended, so it is the burger battle, and we had to account for the cupcake crawl as part of this. But 75% of our visitors to our website, from September 25th to October 29th, were new. That means we reached new audiences, and we brought them to our website. We exposed them to our message. That alone from the marketing side is huge. 16,000 people from approximately that time period, September 20th to November 4th, visited our website. Of those 16,000, 11,000 of those came for the burger battle and the cupcake crawl. And overall, we looked at our website traffic from last year, it was up 22%.
Nice.
So we really were able to make some noise, get some attraction. And, oh my gosh, my eyes, I'm testing myself. Overall, the campaign was very, very successful. Like I said, we're looking at click-through rates over two times what we've had, what the benchmark is, and basically what we tried to do, and which we were successful, is create a perfect storm. Our paid advertising, our earned media, our digital, our organic through the Facebook and the Facebook shares, all were working together to create a lot of noise. So that really is what we wanted, and it worked out really well for us. Approximately, you can see here, I actually totaled the number of burgers sold, the number of, the percentage increase, and then the number of votes, right there. We sold approximately 17,000, or 1,700, excuse me, 1,700 burgers, I believe that's 1,738 burgers there, with, you can see there's varying levels. So some restaurants sold a ton of burgers, and some restaurants sold just a few. There's a few little things that I'll attribute that to, but overall, Avon Brewing Company got the most number of votes, and they really had an excellent burger. I will tell you, I know you all went out to different places, and I'm very curious to know if your feedback echoes mine, but as a secret shopper, when I went around, what I noticed was the level of staff engagement equaled the number of burgers that were sold. Avon Brewing Company, for instance, not only did they put it all over their newsletters and social media, they had it posted everywhere, every server was scripted and came up to the table and repeated that script. They actually offered an in-house contest as well between their staff. So they really, really, really owned it. The Fev as well, down in Oberlin, did a great job of embracing the community and really getting the community. They talked to their people, they changed the message frequently. So those are just two restaurants that really, really, really did a great job of embracing it. And then there's a few restaurants, which I'm not going to name, in which I went in and said, are you doing that burger thing? I heard about the burger thing. And the staff said, no, I don't know what you're, I said, oh, can you check? I swear, I heard something about a burger. And, you know, I kind of challenged them a little, and they said, oh, what burger? Oh, it's this one. Well, they didn't do as well, so.
Well, I had one of them send me to another place for the burger.
As if they weren't participating?
Well, he just said to go some, I went there, and we had the burger, and they suggested I go over to another burger place that had a better burger.
Oh, wow. I will say, Avon Brewing Company, when you got your check, they did send you to another place. They said, we invite you to try out some of the other places.
This was, this was one of the ones that wasn't really doing much for the burger.
Oh, that's a shame.
It is, because if somebody came from outside the community to participate, and that lackluster commitment demonstrated anything, is that we really didn't care.
So those are just two restaurants that really, really, really did a great job of embracing it. And then there's a few restaurants, which I'm not going to name, in which I went in and said, are you doing that burger thing? I heard about the burger thing. And the staff said, no, I don't know what you're, I said, oh, can you check? I swear, I heard something about a burger. And, you know, I kind of challenged them a little, and they said, oh, what burger? Oh, it's this one. Well, they didn't do as well, so.
Well, I had one of them send me to another place for the burger.
As, as if they weren't participating?
Well, he just said to go some, I went there, and then we had the burger, and they suggested I go over to another burger place that had a better burger.
Oh, oh, wow. I will say, Avon Brewing Company, when you got your check, they did send you to another place. They said, we invite you to try out some of the other places.
This was, this was one of the ones that wasn't really doing much for the burger.
That's a shame.
It is, because if somebody came from outside the community to participate, and that lackluster commitment demonstrated anything, is that we really didn't care, it was just a gimmick. And so it was very disappointing, and you're going to have a conversation about their participation next year. Because if they're going to participate, they have to actively engage and participate, or they just shouldn't.
They have to own it, absolutely.
If they just want the advertising to drag people in and do nothing, I'm not interested in their participation.
Absolutely. I, I, I will say, you should see, you should have seen all the text messages and emails that I was getting from people that were all in. Oh, I heard so-and-so was doing this for votes, and, you know? So it was very interesting, because there was a few different sides, but some people were all in. So that was, that was really great. And, let's see. This was really interesting as well, we looked through the zips of the diners. In-county diners, now, I will kind of just say really quick, Vermillion, obviously, because it was split, we didn't know where to put it, so we just threw it in the out-of-county, knowing that it was, you know, one of those odd cities there in terms of the split. But in-county di, zips, 697, out-of-county diners, 225. So we were able to pull people in from out-of-county. Right there just represents, the out-of-county represents the majority, there's a few singles that are not included in that list, I wanted to make it so we could, could read it. We do have a few people that were truly in from out-of-town that participated. I think there was one from Brooklyn, New York, and one from PA. There's a few people that were in from out-of-town, but you can see, Westlake popped up, North Olmsted, Lakewood, people in the surrounding areas, it was working, they were coming to Lorraine County. And also, it was really nice to see so many people from Lorraine County come out and support. The voting results, I have to kind of just give you a little bit of this. As I was saying to Commissioner Kalo, I went through every single vote. Of all the votes, we were very, very strict about the voting. We wanted to, I wanted to be able to feel like we could stand behind it 100%, and we knew it was fair and just, because they worked so hard on these votes. So we received probably around 1,700 votes, between online and paper ballot. The restaurants gave us some mixed reviews, whether they liked paper, whether they liked online, it really depended on the audience of the restaurant, but both were important. Of the 1,700-ish votes that we received online, we had to throw out about 800 votes. And the reason we had to do that was because they were voted anonymously. And we couldn't justify that they were true votes. And I made this very clear to the restaurants and put it out there in repeated emails, just so you know, just so you know, make sure. And then when we did receive information that was incomplete, like for instance, someone just put their first name and left their email, or didn't include their zip, didn't include their phone number, we actually emailed or called them to get that complete information. We threw out all of the duplicates and all the iterations of a name. So for instance, Jen Kennedy, Jennifer M. Kennedy, you know, J. Kennedy, believe it or not, people voted, you know, for, you know, every iteration of their name. So we went back and we said, oh, this email is the same as this email. Or, look, they voted with their Gmail, their Hotmail, and their work email, but they all have the same phone number, and they all have the same zip code. So like I said, I went through every single one. Additionally, we looked at IP addresses to make sure that, for instance, you know, there's not 17 IP addresses that were all the same. And then, you know, some sort of iteration of those emails. So we really felt like we did it. We actually were able to narrow it down to about 900 solid votes that we could live by, so we felt really good. But we did recognize that people did share the burgers, because they were so big and hearty. And that was one of the feedback, a lot of the restaurants said, is that, you know, that people came and shared burgers. So when we saw that one restaurant got more votes than burgers sold, we, we actually said, okay, well, you know, we do know that they were sharing, we had already heard that. The overall best burger winner is the Avon Brewing Company. And like I said, it just, the amount of ballots that they were giving us, and what they did for the staff, and how they embraced the staff, they really, they, they put a nice recipe together, and they had a great burger, so.
Very good burger.
Yeah. We, as a team, felt, felt that that was a really, you know, we, we felt that that was fair and just and legit. The most creative burger goes to the Brew Kettle. So many different restaurants did kind of the same concept overall, where Brew Kettle went in a completely different direction.
So the Treehouse sold 200 of the crab burger? I'm, I'm amazed that they sold 200 of it.
They sold out every day.
Wow.
I know.
They were one of the few places that were open in the afternoon, right?
Yes, yeah, yeah. They, they were open every day just for lunch.
It's unfortunate they didn't, a lot of people didn't vote, because they only received 28 votes, so that's a little surprising, but I, I thought they were going to have a struggle with the type of burger they had there.
Yeah. It, you know, it was really, it was really nice, I, I, that was one of the places that I visited as well. And their audience, I think it was perfect for their audience, and it was perfect for lunchtime. Also, I don't eat a lot of red meat, so for people like me, it was actually a really nice alternative, and I was relieved to see it. I said, oh, that's, that's great. So, yeah, they sold out every day, actually, the day that I was there for lunch, she actually had to, before I could sit down, because I had to wait for the table, she had to hold the number of burgers for us, so that they didn't sell them.
Yeah, Brew Kettle Burger was neat. I asked for it with maple syrup, made it even better.
It was meat out of French toast. You really needed that, right?
Yeah, it was really good, though, yeah, I gotta admit. Like I said, Coles was my favorite, with the Red Dragon hot cheese was my favorite.
Yeah, I heard you telling, telling me about the cheese the next day.
Yeah, I know, it was still there, but it was a really good burger, so I mean, yeah, it was a wonderful event, but yeah, the Brew Kettle had a neat burger.
I think between all of us, we made every place except...
I didn't do the crab stuff there, or Unicorn, I'm not a big seafood person, so I didn't do those two.
The Unicorn, I went down there, but I, the kitchen closed a little bit before I got there, I got there late, and I wasn't able to have the burger. I think that's the last one that we had, between all of us, that we needed to make, so that we could say we made all of the...
I made seven of them.
I made six.
Okay.
Matt, you made a few, didn't you?
Yeah, I think, yeah, I was going to say, it was in that neighborhood of five, I know I went down the Unicorn, thinking they were open for lunch on Friday, and they weren't open, so.
Yeah. That, that actually, the places that, such as The Foundry, that were open for lunch and for dinner, that also helped them.
Oh, sure.
Do better. Absolutely. And then we actually drew a winner, we, because there were so many names, it was impossible to do the old-fashioned drawing, so we actually used a randomizing website and randomized the winner. We inputted all of the legit votes, and Sharon is our winner, who will be contacted today, and she wins dinner for six at Avon Brewing Company.
Nice.
Congratulations, Sharon.
Hey, we know her.
Yeah, I took, I took her email out, just because, tried to scratch that out. The Restaurants Take. So as you know, I go back, and not only do I interview them and hold interviews with them, but I actually ask them to fill in an evaluation form, which asks questions such as, you know, how did we do in terms of communicating? How were the materials that we submitted to you? How were your sales? How was your revenue? So I kind of ask some, a little uncomfortable questions for them, but it's all questions that help us do better next time. And most of the folks felt the campaign was a success. The people that didn't feel it was a success were the ones that didn't sell as many burgers, honestly. Every single person said that they would participate in something like this again. There were mixed reviews on the voting process. Like I said, you know, one restaurant said to me, that paper ballots are crazy. And then another restaurant said, our audience would never vote online. So, you know, it really just kind of depended on who their audience was. The Unicorn, I think that's one place I can safely say, said, our audience doesn't vote online, we need paper. And then we saw restaurants like the Brew Kettle and The Foundry, and Avon Brewing Company, that embraced both. They got equal number of votes through both. Traffic generated, in terms of foot traffic into the restaurants, anywhere between 7% and 15% increase, in terms of just people. In terms of burgers, I will say, a lot of the restaurants said, well, a lot of the people that came into the restaurant, or were already coming in to get a burger, or to get dinner, saw that we were offering this special burger, and we ended up selling them a $9 burger, which we could have charged on a regular menu, 12. So that was something that cut into the revenue, overall revenue for it. But the specialty burgers, a lot of places loved the idea of the flexibility and the creativity of coming up with a specialty burger, but a few said, nah, just judge us on what we serve every day. You know, what we do every day is really good. So that was kind of good feedback to think about in the next time. And like I said, restaurants that fully embraced it did really, really, really well. Their staff was able to speak to it, their staff knew it, it just made a huge, huge, huge difference. In terms of participants, 50% were women, 50% were men. So in terms, that, I was able to judge that on votes. I'm actually going to turn it over to Amanda, who was the person behind the cupcake crawl. She really worked hard and worked with all of the bakeries. So I'm going to let Amanda speak to the cupcake crawl.
Hi.
Hi.
Good morning. Before I start, I just wanted to say, when the burger battle started up, it was kind of funny, I started hearing from some of the bakeries, they were emailing me, is this a competition? And I said, no, no, it's not a competition, no, I think they're coming in and asking about the burger battle, and I think that's where the confusion, and they thought it was funny, because there were two competitions, and they were wondering, you know, is there actually something for the best cupcake? And it was, it was kind of funny the way it played off, like that. So I'll just recap how it worked. There were seven bakeries, eight bakeries, if you counted the Kelsey Elizabeth and Rocky River, and we added that because it was just another option, pulled from Cleveland, and they have like a really wide customer base anyways, so that worked out well for them. They had to visit all seven in order to get the T-shirt, as well as enter in for the grand prize. Five signatures they had to get from bakeries in order to claim their T-shirt prize. I can't really actually read that far, and I have glasses on. So the grand prize drawing would be after the conclusion of the final day, so. Crazy for cupcakes. The social media event page went live on the 18th of September. I came in and I kind of like gave you some of those stats when I first presented. It blew up on social media, it was huge. I was actually really surprised, I was following it from the day I posted to the following morning, and I was just like, Jen, oh my God, it's crazy. So we did Facebook, that was our main thing that we used to advertise on, and then we also used a hashtag, follow the crumbs on Instagram, and that was just to encourage people to participate and post their journey, and to build our following on social media as well. So the overview, our goal was to have 250 participants, we had 250 T-shirts to give away, we exceeded that, so that was nice. Our final roundout was 310. We had 99 grand prize entries, so about 100 people went to all seven bakeries, so that means they went all the way to Medina, they went to Oberlin, they, it was, they were all kind of, they were scattered.
I didn't make it to Medina.
You didn't?
I didn't make it to Medina.
That's okay. And we saw a varied number of zip codes as well, Lorraine County had 203, and then out-of-county had 98, so 67% were from Lorraine County, which was nice, a lot of support from the community. A survey went out after the conclusion of the cupcake crawl to gather data, so I sent that to every single participant, and that was about 300 emails. 133 people got back to me, I was kind of surprised, you know, people are a little iffy about surveys, but I asked questions about, I had them rate the bakeries, I had them answer how they heard about it, so you'll see there, 73% saw on social media, so that was on Facebook, whether a friend had shared the post, something along those lines. 22% from family and friends, and then 4% from the businesses. I was actually a little shocked by the 22% from friends and family, so. The businesses were really happy, I also sent an evaluation out to them, they would all participate again, and that was just after the first week, they were really excited about it. You'll see there in the top, on Sunday opening day, October 1st, Blue Rooster Bake House sold 160 cupcakes after opening at 9:00 AM, which I thought was amazing. There were only three bakeries open on Sunday, so it was Kudrowski's, Blue Rooster, and I believe Cupcake a Day in Medina. So just the three places to run around. Shops all saw a 10% to 15% increase in sales and customers as compared to last year's sales in October of 2016. The only one that I couldn't really get a good comparison from was Little Devil Cupcakery, they had just relocated, so they're now in the Amherst area, whereas they were in downtown Lorraine on Oberlin Avenue, and they were kind of tucked away, so it was hard to find their business before. The Hive was brand new, I think they opened in November.
They had a good location, because it used to be Maggie's, so I mean, it was...
Yes, they did.
Still a bakery.
Right, right. So she was able to sort of build her business that way as well. Shops sold 200 to 1,500 total cupcakes in the month of October. And again, that very number is, you'll see the highs and the lows, some did better than others. Blue Rooster, 1,500 cupcakes. Kelsey Elizabeth, 382, and that was at their Avon Lake store. Little Devil Cupcakery, 400, The Hive had 300, Small Town Suites had 2,400. And I'll actually kind of go into their stats, she sent me a comparison of their October 2016 sales as compared to this year. Their gourmet cupcakes were around 5,000 last year, and their total October sales overall last year was about 7,000. This year, it was gourmet cupcake sales, 6,000, and their total October sales overall was close to 10,000.
No, Amanda, that's the little place in Vermillion, correct?
Yes, yes.
They just loved you, they rate, because wherever I went and got the cupcake, I'd ask them how it was going and stuff, and then I introduced myself as being part of the Visitors Bureau, as a commissioner, they had nothing but rave reviews about you. But those girls, there was two young girls when they were in age, said all the things you did for them, they were just thrilled, so.
That's good, that's nice to hear. They're, they're super nice, they were, I think, the first place I went to, I sat down with Amanda, the owner, and I sort of picked her brain about how, you know, how should I set this up, you know, would you be willing to participate? How would you go about it? What would you recommend? So she was part of the planning stage as well. And then, as far as marketing and advertising, again, we use Facebook as our main source. It sort of fell off there at the end, and it slowed down, but that first week or two before it started, it was, it was growing. We had an overall 108,000 people reached, so that's how many times it was appearing on Facebook in front of an audience. 13,000 people actually viewed the event, and then 2,800 people marked as interested or attending, and then, again, that launched on September 18th. So that's what we ended with, which was pretty impressive, I thought, especially for a first-time event like this. We had, again, 1,400 people download the passports, so there's still probably a lot of passports out there that were unfinished. But I, every single person that came into the Visitors Bureau to turn in their passport, they had a lot of good things to say. And then, of course, there were some, there was some feedback, you know, here's what you could change next year, couple of things about T-shirts, and then maybe the specialty flavor, instead of doing that, something else, but those are things to look at next year, when we go into planning again, so. Oh, and zip codes, excuse me, Lorraine County, the highest two zip codes was Amherst, we had 45 people participate. Aleria, we had 29, and then out-of-county, again, Vermillion, we put them there since they were a little out. 21 people, and then the second highest was from North Olmsted out of county, so.
Is there any questions?
Was there a trophy for that also, or no?
No, we did not do a contest for the cupcake crawl.
There was no contest, okay.
No.
What's the second trophy there?
This is the most creative burger.
Oh, gotcha, okay.
I gotta tell you, I did not think the cupcake thing was going to work at all, and I was wrong, so. When, when it was first proposed, and you were working on it, I was like, cupcakes, please. The, the, that's just because I'm such an Neanderthal and barbarian, eating burgers and so forth, so. But I think Kalo actually bought burger and a cupcake in the same sitting, and ate the burger, and then the cupcake for dessert.
I did, I mean, I did Coles, and I did Little Devil. I did The Pit, and did The Sweets in Vermillion, I did Kelsey Elizabeth, and did Parker's. So I mean, I sort of like, well, my Facebook post showed, I put the cupcake with the burger and trying to combine it, so. It was neat, I mean, the restaurant people, because I talked to them, because I used to be in the bar and restaurant business, were so-so, some people really excited, probably the guy from Avon Brewery, and The Pit Barbecue were the two guys who were most, I mean, they came, when I ordered the burger, the owner came out to talk to me, you know, those guys were... they came, when I ordered the burger, the owner came out to talk to me, you know, those guys were really engaged in it that I saw. But the cupcake people were all nuts about this, it was just amazing. They were running out, there were some places I went to, they'd run out of their specialty cupcake, just pick anything. You know, you know, by four-thirty, five o'clock in the afternoon, so I mean, they were, they were very excited, so I mean, it was neat.
I will say two things. We, as Amanda said, we got feedback from people. And we heard on multiple, multiple accounts is, oh, we had lunch at Aladdin's, and then we went to the Blue Rooster Bakery. So these are people that were traveling in from Medina, Wadsworth, you know, we had people coming from all over that would come, have lunch in a restaurant, and then go to the bakery.
Well, the interesting thing was, we were contacted by the media out of Cleveland because they heard what was going on in Lorraine County. We didn't contact them, they contacted us that, hey, we're hearing a lot of stuff going on, you got, you got the cupcake thing, you got the burger thing, can we come out and interview you guys? We want to talk about some of the exciting things going on in Lorraine County. And that hasn't happened, as far as I can remember. And, and that's the buzz we want. We want to keep creating opportunity and, and have these events periodically and look forward to these events. And we're going to have more of them, so that there's things for people to look forward to, to stay here and come here to do. And, and so there's going to be the second annual, the third annual, and I have some ideas for January and February that I want to talk to you about, because I don't want to have a big gap in between just a few things that were already started. So there's going to be some announcements coming out in January for the next whatever. I already talked to you guys about some ideas I, I had that I want to see reach fulfillment. But that was really nice when that happened. They called us up and they approached us. So we were getting recognized. And I want to do something during Cleveland's Restaurant Week in March. They have, they have two Restaurant Weeks. They have the independents, and then they have the other one. I know we're only doing one, because we don't have a lot of restaurants here, but I definitely want to try to have something, not really to compete, but have an option that, that, that they can choose Lorraine County.
Absolutely.
Good job, nice.
Thank you, thank you for your support.
Yeah, just really happy with the, the new direction that we're going. You know, we talked about wanting to generate more economic activity. We talked about wanting to get the buzz about Lorraine County, and, you know, it's important to have people talking about Lorraine County in Cuyahoga County, in Medina County, and around the area, and, you know, and outside the area. I, I think as Jim knows, he's, he's a big foodie, that, you know, foods will definitely bring people, you know, quite a distance to sample things. But, you know, I, I like the idea that we're helping to bring people to front door businesses. You know, and I'm sure when people look at those numbers, they may say, well, geez, where are a lot of people from, already from Lorraine County? Well, the, the whole part of this plan is to get people in the county, finding out about places they didn't know about, experimenting, trying those places, then telling their friends, hey, I know you live in Rocky River, but why don't you come over for the evening? We're going to go here and grab bite tea, we're going to go here and grab some cupcakes or dessert or whatever it may be. And that's what it's all about, creating that buzz and, and generating that economic activity that maybe ordinarily wouldn't be going on. And that's an important role of, of what we're trying to do and what we're trying to create with this new direction.
And not only are we generating a buzz, but now they're wearing the buzz, when they're wearing the cupcake crawl T-shirts all over the place in Medina and Rocky River and ever, North Olmsted. So, thank you, thank you for your support.
Awesome job. Now we go to work.
Under Resolutions Number One, investments?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Miskowski.
Aye.
Mr. Kalo.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Reprations?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Miskowski.
Aye.
Mr. Kalo.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Transfers?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Miskowski.
Aye.
Mr. Kalo.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
No advances, no repayments, requisitions?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Miskowski.
Aye.
Mr. Kalo.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Travel?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Miskowski.
Aye.
Mr. Kalo.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Bills?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Miskowski.
Aye.
Mr. Kalo.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Under the Commissioners authorized various personnel actions as indicated on the summary sheet from Police Department jurisdiction, Lorraine County Commissioners?
Welcome back, Mr. Cordez. You're going to have an extra-long executive session today?
I do have a number of issues, Commissioner. I, I have a couple labor contracts with some of the sheriff units I want to go over. We're pushing some timeframes there that I need to deal with. I, I also have some potential hires at Job and Family Services, workforce development that I want to discuss with the board, maybe nine-one-one. Also pending legal matter, potential purchase of real estate. For the moment, I think that's it, so all of those issues allowable under Sunshine Act for executive session discussion. So to ask at the conclusion of our regular board meeting, go into executive session and we identify those areas that I've mentioned. Thank you.
Thank you.
Approved away the reading of the minutes of November twenty-ninth and December fifth?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Miskowski.
Aye.
Mr. Kalo.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Except amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission and authorize necessary tax levies, certifying them to the auditor, and this was due to the renewal levies passed and moving inside millage.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Miskowski.
Aye.
Mr. Kalo.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Community development, approved Donald B. Eager and Associates LLC Lancaster in the amount of eighteen thousand as a provider for fair, fair housing services in compliance with the CDBG program year two thousand seventeen, effective January first, two thousand eighteen through December thirty-ninth, two thousand nineteen.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Miskowski.
Aye.
Mr. Kalo.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Under facilities, approved an entry contract with Clark &amp; Post Architects, Inc., Lorraine, in the amount of twenty-five thousand to perform architectural and engineering services for the interior alterations at two oh one Burns Riddle area.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Except for the FBI building in nine-one-one?
Well, it's, it's, it's the, it's the Drug Task Force Coroner Building. We're going to have to name some of these buildings, they're getting a little hard to, you know, I, I hate the formerly Columbia Gas building, formerly this building, but we're going to begin the interior work. We, we got in under the wire on the exterior work, all the curtain wall work that we had to remove all the windows and repair all the masonry, and it's quite extensive amount of exterior work, not really expensive, but extensive. As you knew, they, I informed you, they, they didn't really seal the building correctly when it was built, and you can't have window sills that lean in, just doesn't work too well on the drainage. So I was very pleased with the, the amount of work that, that happened before the, the bad weather. Was he giving you a naming option? I don't even want to know. Before the weather set in, so we didn't really do any interior looks until we got all the exterior work done. And, because I wanted to put drain footer tiles, I thought the building was wicking water actually up through the masonry, because it wasn't, I didn't think it was draining. Even though it's a slab building, I still didn't think it was draining adequately around the footers. So we had all that done, and now I want to start doing some of the interior work, so the building's tight, it's, it's dry. So I want to work with Clark &amp; Post and, and the people that are going to occupy the building towards the interior designs. I want to work on the Drug Task Force side first, obviously, and then with the Coroner side. I hope to have all of this work done by the spring, and same with the nine-one-one building, and be able to open them to the public for inspection and viewing in the springtime. I understand you were really happy with the color choices on the nine-one-one building.
I was just telling Commissioner Kalo before the meeting, I asked him if he had driven by there, that the outside of the nine-one-one building, where it's painted, it's like a charcoal gray now, it looks absolutely wonderful, I love it.
Looks pretty much like the inside of my office, doesn't it?
Great, great, great.
Yes. The, the, so we're, we're, we're working towards getting all the equipment now, and it's, everything's on order, the consoles, the equipment for nine-one-one. And I need to work with the Drug Task Force on exactly when we're going to be operationally up and running in, in, in the newer building. But it's, it's progressing nicely. We got a lot of projects underway, Commissioners. Where, where, you see the courthouse, the veneers have been laid in, it's as close.
Parking areas been down and striped?
It, it has. You know, the, we got as close to the sandstone look as we could. Once the sandstone gets wet, like the courthouse is wet right now, you can, you can see it, it's, the difference seems more, more striking, but when it's dry, it's a little closer in color, because the sandstone changes with, with the amount of moisture content it has. It's, that's where unfortunate, the, the newer stone doesn't, doesn't really do that. But I think, I think it's, it's, it's a nice look together.
Was it actually stone on that front of that side?
It's a manufactured product.
But is it, it's stone, if it was stone?
It's a manufactured stone. It'd be nice if we got the roof panels, and I know I keep looking out there, wondering why they can't seal on the roof all this time. But we have the courthouse, we have the nine-one-one building, we have the Drug Task Force building. We're working with the Health Department on their new building, because we're putting that building up in conjunction with them out there. We have, we have quite a few projects underway here, and so we have our hands full with the amount of work we're doing. But, but it's progressing nicely. And so this is, this will be Clark &amp; Post working on the interior. I, I don't anticipate more than a few hundred thousand dollars on the interior renovations, but we do need to make that space suitable for the next twenty, twenty-five years. So we might as well design it with, with a life expectancy for both those. It'll be nice to finally have the county coroner in an office, you know, that's the coroner's office rather than renting space over a bank, you know, somewhere. They've never really had a permanent home, a permanent location that we can call that. And as we discussed, it's time for the county to eventually look at having its own morgue and services and, and getting into the twenty-first century, rather than hopscotching around, you know, between facilities and doing those things. So probably after we get the administrative end of their office, based on what we're talking about, building out part of that into that type of facility eventually.
Miskowski.
Aye.
Mr. Kalo.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Job and Family authorized purchase service agreement with U.S. Securities Associates, Inc., to independence in the amount of six hundred two thousand five hundred for security services effective retroactive December first, two thousand seventeen through September thirty, two thousand eighteen, and authorized director to execute behalf of the Board of Prosecutors as proposed to form.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Miskowski.
Aye.
Mr. Kalo.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Amendment Resolution seventeen seven sixty-nine adopted November twenty-ninth, funding Title Twenty Social Service Black Grant for fiscal year seventeen, and authorized director to execute in behalf of the Board of Prosecutors as proposed to form. Number three, Resolution sixteen five eighteen adopted August seventeen, two thousand seventeen, volunteer guardianship program in Lorraine County, increased Title Twenty base funds of eight thousand six hundred ninety-eight dollars and twenty cents, which will be available from October first, two thousand sixteen, through September thirty, two thousand seventeen, and the amendment is to reflect this as Lutheran Metropolitan Ministering not voluntary guardianship.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Miskowski.
Aye.
Mr. Kalo.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Stormwater award contract arising on company Mansfield in the amount of sixty-two thousand three hundred ninety dollars, which includes a contingency for any unforeseen change orders for Luther lateral ditch. Five bids were received on November fourteenth, this being the most responsive complying with specifications. Issue notice to proceed honor before December sixth, incomplete honor before April fifteenth, two thousand eighteen, and authorized administrator to release retainage completion project.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
It still amazes me that Mansfield can stage up to come to Lorraine County for a ditch project cheaper than the other bids we had. I was talking to Peter Zwick from the Engineers Office last week.
I, I.
How can this happen?
Commissioner, I, I looked into this, you know, I, I, obviously, all this passes my desk before it gets on the agenda, and, and I was disturbed by this too. But it's a sealed bid.
Right.
There's, there was little I could do about this. I, I don't understand how a company can mobilize out of Mansfield and, and underbid. We have plenty of companies here in Lorraine County that, that, that should be competitive on this work. I don't know what else to do. We make sure they get noticed, and we make sure that they have an opportunity.
Well, we had the bids that came in, just none were as low as this one here.
And some of them were quite.
Significantly higher.
Yes. It's, it's discouraging. I, I don't know if, if they got a little lazy, because we've had quite a bit of work. You know, we've had a lot of projects. We've, we have about a million and a half dollars worth of ditch work going on between last year's projects, this year's projects, and of course, district projects that are much bigger than the grant projects. And maybe they're not as hungry as they once were for this type of work. But I'm going to, I'm going to actually sit down and talk to a few of our people that bid more frequently and have a chat with them about needing to be a little bit tighter on their, on their numbers, so that this work doesn't leave Lorraine County. It's, it's very discouraging for us. Nothing I can do about this.
No, I saw that, but I mean, I just, I couldn't believe I was talking to Peter, how do you set up and send guys back and forth?
Well, the mobilization is, is big.
I know.
And so they're coming all the way up from Mansfield, and they're still apparently making a profit on the work. And the mobilization out of Mansfield's got to be a lot more, plenty of companies real close to this area that, that do this work, they have, have to have a lot less mobilization cost than this company.
Yeah, they may, our local companies may be very busy with the current work and don't have enough staffing, so they bid it a little bit over to cover it, so. No, just a comment I was going to make, when it is what it is.
Miskowski.
Aye.
Mr. Kalo.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Transit approved an entry agreement with City of Overland to provide transportation services effective January second through December twenty-seventh, two thousand eighteen. City of Overland provides county with local funds in the amount of twenty-three dollars and fifty-nine cents per hour to be used by LCT as a match, plus a fifty-dollar monthly fee for administrative expense. No county general funds are used.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Miskowski.
Aye.
Mr. Kalo.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Under the engineer award contract to Kelston, Inc., Shelby, in the amount of one hundred and thirteen thousand four hundred and seventy-six dollars for the Eden Homes wastewater treatment plant UV disinfection conversion. This is the only bid received on November twenty-second, and the engineer's estimate was within ten percent. Issue notice to proceed honor before January eighth, two thousand eighteen, incomplete honor before April first. Authorized minister notify the auditor to release retainage completion project.
I don't normally like to go with one bid, but I want to get this work underway. We've, we've had a problem with compliance at this plant. This conversion will, will make it easier for us to stay in compliance there. Waiting a few more months is not going to make it any easier, and I'm, I'm not completely sure that we're even going to get a second bid on this type of work. So I wanted to speak to that, because you normally would not see this, I would send it back out. But, but I'm comfortable that this, this, this situation warrants you accepting of one bid.
Oh, so moved. I didn't, I thought you did already.
Discussion further, Miskowski.
Aye.
Mr. Kalo.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Approved entry agreement general engineering services agreement with Pogomeyer Design Group in the amount of two hundred and thirty-nine thousand nine hundred and sixteen dollars for the construction, administration, and inspection services of LOR State Route three oh one zero seven point two five Village of La Grange. Eighty percent is being funded by Federal Highway Administration through NAWACA, and twenty percent provided by OPWC in Village of La Grange.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Miskowski.
Aye.
Mr. Kalo.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Approved entry agreement with Trans Systems to assist with the development of final construction plans for Middle Ridge, West Ridge Road safety improvements in the amount of forty-nine thousand nine hundred and sixty-eight dollars to be paid from the engineer project account.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Miskowski.
Aye.
Mr. Kalo.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Under development disabilities, request auditor pursuant to ORC fifty-seven oh five point oh three to certify Lorraine County Commissioners the total current tax valuation of the county, and the dollar amount of revenue that will be generated for five years for the entire territory of the subdivision of Lorraine County in, in the amount of one point six eight seven five mils on the May eighth, two thousand eighteen ballot.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Miskowski.
Aye.
Mr. Kalo.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Under treasure, approved payment to U.S. Bank in the amount of one thousand two hundred and forty dollars for the annual lockbox fees.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Miskowski.
Aye.
Mr. Kalo.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Cordez.
Jeff, when I was gone last week, did we get all those changes in the funds that we needed to move around done? I wasn't really sure. My emails were kind of sketchy going out where I was. So all those funds were moved around appropriately. I know you tried to get them before I left. So I wanted to make sure we didn't have to send anything back.
No, everything we spent like we wanted to will show zero leftovers in the federal fiscal year.
Okay, I, I just wanted to make sure. I, I lost, I lost a bubble on that, so.
No, we did real well.
I got it, I got it, okay.
Well, that one, that one that you approved was my error. I had the wrong pay, and they, they bailed me out on that one. I appreciate it.
All right, thanks, Jeff, appreciate it. With that, I don't have any further comments this morning. Thank you, Commissioners.
Mr. Arness?
I would like to discuss two matters of pending litigation in executive session.
Commissioners report.
Friday, I attended the Community Alliance meeting, and I thank Commissioner Lundey for bringing together all the elected officials and/or their representatives to give us the legislative briefing. Also, we had a very interesting discussion on medical marijuana.
Benny Uco, he's the best.
Yeah, he, yeah, he was good.
Were there samples, Commissioner Kalo?
Nope, no samples.
No, no, no samples.
That afternoon, I was in with Commissioner Kalo, we had a Ohio Public Works meeting where we approved projects for District Nine. Then that evening, Ron's aunt, Mary French, she passed away a few years ago, but every year they have a gift for the children in her honor. She had fostered over a hundred children in her lifetime, so I attended that out in Lakewood. And then Saturday, I attended the swearing-in ceremony for Jody Moon, who's a city councilwoman in Lorraine with Commissioner Lundey. Kind of went back and forth between my work husbands.
My son got an invitation, my son went to Jody, I think she mailed it to the wrong house, because I never got an invite.
That's why.
Because we were at an event.
I was telling that that night, 'cause we were at an event.
Right.
I said, I never had an invite, she must've sent it to my son.
'Cause he was sitting behind me, you're right.
Yeah.
Well, the important people were there, right?
Yeah, right.
And then yesterday, we had a road vacation hearing, which we approved for Elyria Township, which will be used for much-needed detention area over there.
Cool. Yeah, it was a busy week. Wednesday afternoon, we had a conference call with the County Commissioners Association. We have a joint committee with the Board of Elections officials, talking about our capital request in regards to equipment next year. Hope to actually finish up, there was a follow-up phone call Friday, but you and I were in Public Works Committee, so I don't know what happened there, I'm assuming this week at the Commissioners' Conference we're attending, that, we'll have a meeting and follow-up on this. Noaka met on Thursday, our Governance and Committee, and Executive Committee met, long drawn-out conversations with changes and people coming to the Board after the elections this year, and seeing who's gonna be appointed. Again, we'll be meeting this Friday. Governance meets prior to the Governing Board meeting on Friday. We did, again, approval of Ohio Public Works. Commissioner Lundey and I attended the Band-Aid for Puerto Rico fundraiser on Saturday at Lorraine High School Performing Arts. Great job put together, Antonio Barrios and everybody involved, Vic Santana, who helped put it together, they did a great job, great turnout from there. And from there, I attended the Howard Hanna Children's Fund fundraiser. It's a regional approach from all the Howard Hannas. Liz Concar, who runs the Amherst office, I'm friends with, makes sure I get an opportunity to get there every year. Plenty of guests, they raise a lot of money for their children's fund. And again, then we also had the vacation hearing, as Commissioner Kowski stated, so, end of my report.
I just wanna personally thank a former colleague of mine, Senator Kenny Yuko, who was definitely, went out of his way to, to make it possible to come over here, Lorraine County, lives in Richmond Heights, and represents the area over there, but he's been a leader on the medical marijuana issue. We had a lot of legislators, or, or a lot of governmental leaders who said that they wanted us to talk more about that topic, and so we facilitated that through the Lorraine County Community Alliance. Yeah, Senator Yuko is just one of the nicest people you will ever meet, just, just an amazing guy, so.